Awesome. Okay. So, good evening and welcome to the December 10th, 2019 City Council's special meeting, the last meeting of the year and the last meeting for this council. Will the city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Debbie Bertland.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saleem Nees.
Here.
Councilmember David Weisentiner. Councilmember Bruce Bassett. Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Andrell. And Councilmember Wendy Wyker.
Super, thank you. So, we're now going to move to our first item of business, which is, of course, to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
It's been first and second. Anybody want to offer an amendment?
Well, can I pull something from the consent agenda?
You're actually going to...
I'd like to pull AB 5638.
All right, great. So polled, so all in favor of the amended agenda, having polled AB 5638 from the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. So now, we're going to move straight into the city manager's report with a very snowy predictive picture?
The only reason I can show a snow picture this evening, Mayor, is because our public works director is on vacation. Otherwise, he would not allow me to do so. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Jessie Bond. I'm your interim city manager. Tonight, I thought I'd hit on just a few of the work items that we're carrying forward to next year, although I will admit, we did not have time to go through all of them this evening. Quickly, on a happy news story, thanks to the generous generosity of our community again, the Youth and Family Services Emergency Family Assistance Holiday Gift Program is providing gifts and gift cards to 85 of our island youth. These youth and their families also receive holiday meal assistance. And I believe that food was all collected or mostly collected through the Mercer Island High School Food Drive. So, thank you to everyone that donated to this program. On a totally different note, heads up about a couple of projects happening on the I-90 Trail. Apologies, these maps are really small, so I'll describe them. In the easternmost portion of the I-90 Trail, the King County Waste Water Treatment Division will be out over the next two weeks during some, doing some tree survey work, so measuring and photographing the trees. The trail will remain open and there will be no road impacts. Sound Transit in the area near Shorewood Drive will actually be doing some work December 16th and 17th, so that's next week, Monday and Tuesday. And they are planning to remove those trees that, some of them are not healthy, others were damaged during the regrading project that happened earlier this year. So, the trees will be removed, and then there is a replanting plan over the next several months, and I don't have specific dates. I understand it depends on species and weather to ensure survivability. There may be some impacts. Actually, excuse me, the trail will be closed in areas during this work, so if you have any questions about this, please don't hesitate to reach out. Sound Transit Park and Ride Permit Parking Program. So, we are still, Sound Transit is still accepting applications for people that use the park and ride for a permit. The permit's going to affect January 1st, and I was doing quick math, I believe there are still more than 100 permits available. I didn't do the exact math. So, act now. We keep saying they're going to sell out and they haven't yet. That's quite a few still remaining. And some good news, data we received from Sound Transit indicates that 93% of the first week permit applications were from Mercer Island residents, which was our hope, that our local residents would take advantage of the program. Kristen Taylor, who's sitting here today, she's continuing to chase the data on the permit parking program, and I will provide another update after the first of the year. For those of you considering this, just a reminder, these permits hold your spot until 9:00 a.m., Monday through Friday. If you're a carpool, you can get together, your permit is actually free. You just need to form a group of two or more riders to get to the park and ride each morning. All right. A couple departments asked me to provide updates, so starting with the Fire Department. You may recall that they are one of the departments working on an organizational assessment. They're specifically focused on staffing and how we might do things differently, particularly when we have turnover and have to use overtime to fill gaps. They are interviewing with two consultants right now and expect to make a decision before the end of the month. And we anticipate bringing this item back for discussion with the city council in the first or second quarter of 2020. Also, some good news in the Fire Department, we have two firefighters moving forward with training that will hopefully, in 2020, get us back to full staffing. Firefighter Edwards graduates from the Fire Academy on Thursday and then moves on to EMT school. He will then be active in early 2020. Firefighter Collins is joining our department on January 2nd, heads to the academy on January 8th, and then, once his training is complete, we will be back to full staffing. So, Chief Steve Heitman is very enthusiastic about getting back to that place. From the Community Planning Department, several updates, just a reminder that our small cell ordinance work will continue in 2020. Planning Commission's received an introduction, has developed an initial scope of work. Council will be back in quarter one of 2020 to talk about that scope of work and provide further direction for the Planning Commission as they continue to work through these regulations. Also, not in any particular order, the Community Planning Department is another department that is working on an organizational assessment, which is well underway. The consultant is here, they've gathered a whole bunch of information, and now they're starting to look at recommended action items. So, some key things they're looking at, staffing structure, workflow for permits, other opportunities for operational improvements, and that also will be coming back to the council for discussion in sometime in quarter one or quarter two. Just a point here, that the information we're gathering will help inform the council about levels of service and allow you to make some decisions or changes as you see fit. Critical Areas Regulation, this is an item that we haven't followed up with you on for a while. So, as a reminder, we adopted amendments to the Shoreline Master Program last summer. They've been transmitted to the Department of Ecology, and they came back and said, "Okay, we've got a few questions, we have, you know, essentially some things we need to work out." We anticipate, at this point, they are going to approve the amendments, and it may even be by the end of this year or very early in January 2020. So, once we have that approval, we'll certainly be back with an update for you. I shouldn't jinx it, right, and say, "We think they're going to approve it," but we think they're going to approve it. Community Facility Zone, so you may recall, in August, the Planning Commission asked this, the Planning Commission was tasked, excuse me, by the city council to develop a problem statement and alternative approach to regulating community facilities. Essentially, the Planning Commission, I understand, last week had completed a draft problem statement. However, they have not yet completed their work on a recommended approach. My suggestion at this point is to have the Planning Commission do a check-in with the city council, probably in February 2020, before we go much further with this planning work. So, we'll also be calendaring that. A reminder, we have a big planning project ahead of us in 2020, the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan. We call it the PROS Plan internally. This is your Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, so it looks at everything and anything, parks and recreation. We are overdue for an update. This plan is required to maintain grant eligibility with the state of Washington. The Parks and Recreation Commission, your newest Parks and Recreation Commission, is guiding the process and will be advising the council as we move forward. They've been working on a community survey that we anticipate will launch in January, and I understand the Let's Talk page is live now as well. So, more to follow on that. The slide that's omitted here, and I apologize, it's an update on Sound Transit. You may recall, we transmitted a letter to Sound Transit a couple months ago. At this point, we've had just one meeting, and I anticipate discussions on Sound Transit will pick up again after the first of the year, so I'll have more to share after the holidays. Speaking of holiday closures, we do have some closures coming up for the Christmas holiday on December 25th and January 1st for New Year's. Wow, thank you. I see a number of faces here that were at the firehouse munch and the lighting at Mercer Dale Park last Friday. The turnout was fantastic, it was a lot of fun, there was a ton of great energy. The firehouse was bald, well-packed. I understood also from the fire union, they raised $600 in their collections, their donations, so that's fantastic. And I just want to give a shout-out again to the Mercer Island community for not only donating, but volunteering to help bring that program back. And what I will tell you is, the donors, many of them wrote significant checks, have all asked to remain anonymous, and these are people that donated anywhere from $2,000 to $8,000. So, even though I begged and said, "Can I please recognize you?" They all said no. So, I'll just say, we had some very generous people come forward to fund this event. So, thank you to all of them. And although this is our last council meeting, I will remind you, December 22nd, we have a couple of events. We will be lighting the menorah on December 22nd at 5:00 p.m. at Mercer Dale Park. That menorah will stay on display through the Hanukkah holiday. And then, later that evening at 7:30 p.m., the Argosy ships will be at Luther Burbank Park. So, encourage you to come out and enjoy both celebrations that evening. And there's likely a lot of work plan items that I missed, we will be sure to pick them up on the other side in 2020. Thank you all, and happy holidays.
Great, thank you. All right. So, next up on the agenda is appearances, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to city council on any item. Remarks should please be addressed to council as a whole and not to individual council members or staff members. The basic principle is to please be constructive. So, with that, who's here for public appearances? If you want to go ahead and step forward, that would be great. Welcome.
Craig Reynolds, 8105 Southeast 48th Street. Since this is the last meeting for three of our council members, I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to all the council members, but particularly outgoing members, Bassett, Bertland, and Weisentiner. It's a difficult job, I've learned a lot from watching and listening to you in the last couple of years. You demonstrated patience, thoughtfulness, vision, cooperation, passion, caring, and a commitment to improving the island. I haven't agreed with any of you on every issue, but I never doubted you had the best interest of the island at heart. You've all been an inspiration, and I thank you for your service. My wife Jean was unable to be here tonight, but she gave me a message that she asked me to read. Thank you, council member and former mayor Bassett, for your many years of service to your city. I'm particularly grateful for your exemplary leadership and efforts to address climate change. Your commitment and energy towards this cause has been inspiring to me and gives me great hope that cities and metropolitan areas have the ability to make real progress fighting the mounting climate crisis. I also think, and "think" was underlined, I'm thankful for your encouragement and support of my husband in his run for council. Thank you, Mayor Bertland, for your many years of dedicated service to your community. I appreciate your commitment to protecting the national environment, natural environment, both at a local level by focusing on preserving parks and tree cover, and on a global level where we work on addressing climate change. I'm grateful for your service and saddened by how you are treated by some members of the community. You represented the island values that I know in love, compassion, civility, neighborliness, grace, kindness, hard work, and making the island better for those that come after us. You embody Michelle Obama's exhortation, "When they go low, we go high." So, with that, I just wanted to wrap up and say thank you, and for the four remaining council members, I look forward to serving with you. Thank you.
Welcome.
I think I'm next, I don't see the list, but...
Don't worry about it. Where did we...
There's not that many. Okay. I'm Carolyn Boatsman, my address is 3210 74th Ave Southeast, and my purpose here tonight is to thank our retiring council members for their service. First, I want to thank Dave for stepping up to this job here in these last four years and quickly coming up to speed on all the issues that we were facing on Mercer Island, and always speaking forthrightly with humor and helping to decide these many important issues that have come up. So, I also want to particularly thank Debbie Bertland and Bruce Bassett for their extraordinary service and many years of dedication to the betterment of our community. The highlight list have to be left to a more talented and organized orator, but it's very long, very long, for both of you, all the wonderful things you've contributed. You both bring personal traits, background, knowledge, dogged work ethic, both models of civility, and wonderfully adept at sharing a meeting, representing us as mayor here and throughout the region. It's really been, I've really felt like we were, you did us all so proud. Bruce, your leadership in sustainability and climate will always stand out in my mind. I thank you so much. And Debbie, your leadership in civility and inclusion, respect for everyone's viewpoints, forging consensus, your signature unflappable style will leave an everlasting impression here. So, thank you very much to all of you, and thank you so much. Best of luck in the new phase of your lives. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Lucia Pirzio-Burley, 4212 West Mercer Way, Mercer Island. Again, I too want to thank you, the three of you who are leaving council for your service. I'm not sure why any of you want this job. It's the worst, least paid job I've ever seen. I appreciate your grace in shepherding us, we're like a troupe of unruly teenagers who think we know best, but you have more facts. So, I really wanted to, you've been an example to us in terms of your grace through this harrowing election and your exemplary civility and vision, forethought in how we're going to leave this place a better place. And I want to, in particular Debbie and Bruce, who've been doing this for quite a while, but I have a token that I found on my desk this afternoon as I was cleaning away years and years of crap. And this is from years ago, when Bruce and I were counting how many children actually walked to school. And he convinced me, because we were working on safer ways, better ways, to get kids to school. We haven't yet found the ideal solution, but we're getting closer. He convinced me that data is the baseline for everything, so I would like to give you back your counter, which I believe is no longer valid.
I can't imagine what you're going to do with that.
Welcome.
Hello, hello. I do not have any prepared remarks, I actually am just here to give you all something that Julie wanted to give the outgoing council members. I did, since I am up here, I will say, Todd Fiala, 7712 89th Place Southeast. Thank you, every one of you, thank you for the time you put into the community. I know it's, they've already said it, it's a thankless job and doesn't get paid nearly enough for what it is, so thank you all for, you know, trying to make the place a better place for all of us. So, I'm going to hand out three items to the outgoing people, and that's again from Julie. She could not make it tonight, she's at her first council meeting in the city of Kirkland, where she's the interim public works director, so.
Thank you. Tell her, good luck. Yes, our best to you and the family. So now, when we need to borrow, that's right, and so when we need to borrow salt and snowplows and everything else, we've got an in.
Thank you, I'd like to echo the comments of those who preceded me here in thanking those who are departing the council. You have my personal best wishes for terrific health, fulfillment in everything that your many talents take you. Thank you for your service. I also would like to thank the four remaining, those four remaining people who are here, three I can't count very well, oh, four, yeah, with whom I'll have the privilege of serving, and I'd just like you to know that any illusion that I had that this is a walk in the park was as long since been dispelled. So, thank all of you for putting your shoulders to the wheel for this marvelous community. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Are you going to close out the year? No, okay. All right, with that, public appearances is closed. With that, we move to consent calendar. We've already modified, we did kind of two steps at once when we approved the agenda. We actually, de facto, pulled AB 5638 off the consent calendar, and that will be then the first item of regular business. So, the consent calendar, as it currently exists, is to approve accounts payable, certification of payroll, approve the minutes of November 19th, and then the 2020/21 AFSCME collective bargaining agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded? Bruce, second? Sorry. All right, somebody seconded it? All right. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, passes. Thank you. So, we now move on to the first item of regular business, which is going to be Agenda Bill 5638, which is the 2019 Minor Code Amendments, otherwise known as Ordinance Number 19C-21 for the second reading and potential adoption. So, we're welcoming Community Planning and Development Director Evan Maxim.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I have probably the shortest slide of the evening. Just made a brief observation based on the amendments that were proposed by, or pardon me, directed by the city council at your last meeting. If the ordinance is passed as currently drafted this evening, we will not actually have a docketing process in 2019, creating a bit of a conundrum on our end. We recognize that the city council is interested in managing the legislative work plan items for the forthcoming years, essentially recommending that you provide a little bit of a transition period here, taking into account our hearings board order of compliance by February 18th, providing a little bit of a transition period on the part of the city staff to get the new docketing process in order. With that, I have a recommended motion for the city council to consider, the motion on the screen in front of you is the same motion that's in your packet with the addition of the underlined text at the end of the motion, and that text would have the amendments taking effect no earlier than February 18th of 2020. With that, Mayor, I would turn it back over to you.
Great. Counsel, are there any questions? Lisa, and then Saleem? We didn't have any, I'm just asking if there's questions of, yeah, I got this, thanks. Lisa?
Thanks. Thanks, Evan, for all your work on this. Is no earlier than February 18th, is that like an enforceable date, or should we just say on February 14?
I will look to the interim city attorney, Beal Park.
The reason why we actually wordsmith it this way is that there is a potential, highly unlikely, that if this ordinance does not get published before February 18th, that the effective date of the ordinance could be later than the effective date of the amendment. So, that's why we put it in a way. This is just a custom that we've done, it's more applicable when the effective date of the amendment and the ordinance are closer than what it is in this event, but it's just the language that we use as standard when the effective date of the ordinance and the effective date of the amendments are different.
Okay. Thank you. So, Benson, did you...
I just want a clarification, I think you may have mentioned this, but the importance of the February 18th, 2020 date is to ensure that we are in compliance with the court order?
That's correct, council member.
Okay. And then, I think that's nice about pushing that effective date, it also gives a number of community members an opportunity to at least, if they're considering a code amendment, a time to, in fact, submit it, is that...
That would be correct, council member.
Are there any other council member comments?
I'm just going to speak briefly. I'm debating whether or not I'm actually going to vote for this particular motion. Last week, I did not vote in support, in particular because, to me, this feels like we don't have a problem, and we're putting time and energy into solving a problem that we don't have. There have been very few, I believe no more than three of these particular scenarios that have come forward, and I'm not even sure if that's in the eight years that I've been on council. And I can certainly speak to one of them, in which the ability for the council to very quickly respond was the difference between a business being able to move forward or not move forward. So, for me here, while I appreciate this concept of efficiency, I'm not sure, while we're trying to address a problem that we anticipate might happen, and at the same time creating potential obstacles for the need for council and community to move quickly in the future. But with that said, I will probably find myself in the minority. Counsel, any further discussion? All right.
I move the, to adopt Ordinance Number 19C-21, amending Title 19 of the Mercer Island City Code to clarify development and administrative standards and to create a procedure to docket and consider suggested amendments to development regulations with an effective date for the amendments no earlier than February 18, 2020.
Second.
It's been first and second. Counsel, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. So, motion passes 6-1. Great. Okay, so, the second item of regular business is Agenda Bill 5644, which is the acquisition of the Arco Tully's property. We've only been waiting for this for 18 months. All right, so this is a big moment. So, for those who are watching, this agenda bill basically authorizes the interim city manager to execute closing documents to complete the city's acquisition of the real estate property at 7810 Southeast 27th Mercer Island, Washington, generally known as the Tully's property.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Your interim city attorney, Beal Park, to present this agenda item. As a little bit of background, the city entered into a purchase and sale agreement to acquire the Tully's property for $2 million as a possible development site for the city's proposed community parking and mixed-use project. After the purchase and sale agreement was executed, the city entered into its due diligence period, and one of the primary objectives during the due diligence period was to negotiate and agree to a cost reimbursement agreement with BP Arco for the cost of environmental cleanup. The due diligence period was extended multiple times, and after the city finally entered into the reimbursement agreement with BP Arco, this happened last November, and the city waived all its due diligence inspection contingencies on November 22nd and agreed to proceed with the acquisition. So, right now, we're in the closing phase of the purchase and sale agreement. Under the amended purchase and sale agreement, closing must occur before December 31st, 2019, and this was a condition imposed by the sellers, so they would avoid the increase in... so they would avoid the increase in the real estate excise tax that's upcoming for next year. The purchase price remains at $2,000, $2 million, and the funds will be coming from the city's REIT I, which has already been appropriated. And of the $2 million, $150,000 in earnest money has already been deposited with escrow. Closing date right now is currently scheduled for December 27th, 2019, and what staff is seeking is authorization from the City Council to allow the city manager, interim city manager, to sign all necessary closing documents on behalf of the city. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel, any questions for the city attorney?
So, one little change that we're asking, in the event that the city manager is unable to execute the documents, I added that the city manager's designee should execute the document. So, if you could adopt, make the motion as presented in the PowerPoint, that would be preferred.
Is there a motion?
I move to authorize interim city manager, or the interim city manager's designee, if she is unavailable to execute the closing documents to complete the city's acquisition of the real property at 7810 Southeast 27th Street, Mercer Island, Washington.
Second?
It's been first and second. Counsel, any discussion? I see Benson leaning forward.
I have no questions. I just really wanted to thank, again, the staff for many months of hard work, or outside council as well. Special thanks, really, to the sellers for being so cooperative and agreeing to extend the due diligence period. I think people have realized how difficult and the cleanup process is, and how complex the reimbursement agreement was. So, again, really thank the sellers for their patience and their cooperation.
And I'm going to say a few words. You know, I'm going to echo an appreciation to the staff, to the public, to the sellers, so many people. But I would, I would also just remind the community that this is an amazing opportunity, that right at the heart of our town center, right at the gateway to the city and the entrance to light rail, the city will have a piece of real estate. And we put out an RFQ, well, I'm trying to remember, it was about a year ago, plus or minus, time flies, and in that, there was a description of the property. But I would also encourage, as we go forward and the council goes forward, in terms of looking at the best and highest use, that it really be the best and highest use. And the one example I'm going to give is, in talking to previous council members, when, you know, looking back over their history and, you know, decisions that they made, decisions maybe that they didn't make, one that came up several times was with regard to the park and ride. And there seemed to be general consensus that would have, should have, could have put that third story on there that would have been dedicated Mercer Island parking. Now, I can't say whether it would have happened or it should have happened, but when you look at this particular piece of property, I would ask you to think long and hard about whether or not 100 parking places, Mercer Island preferred parking places, is the best that we can do on that site. The obvious question is, well, if we did more, how on earth would we pay for it? And that would be a challenge that I would leave to future councils, to the finance director, et cetera. TBD remains, there's additional bonding capacity there. But this is, I don't want to say once in a lifetime, but this is a once in a rare occasion. When you look at that parcel, think about parking, think about the opportunity for MICA, think about the, all the assets that it can bring to this community, and I'll be very, very excited to see how the council and the community goes forward. So, I'm excited, thrilled, and I'm sure there's probably a huge amount of relief on a lot of people's part that this major step is being completed. So, if there's no further comment, ready to vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. We now move to our third item of regular business, which is Agenda Bill 5645, the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. And for that, we have Director Evan Maxim.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Evan Maxim, your Community Planning and Development Director. So, the comprehensive plan docket tonight, just a brief overview of the process. We engaged in this really every year for the last three or four years. And then, just a summation of the planning commission's recommended preliminary docket for your consideration this evening. So, just a quick overview, our process is that we do advertise soliciting comprehensive plan amendment docket items in typically September and August. This year, we provided notice both on August 21st and August 28th, setting forth a deadline of October 1st for any comprehensive plan amendment suggestions. We did not receive any this year from the public at large. Planning Commission reviewed the staff's recommendation on October 16th and formulated their recommendation to the City Council. The staff recommendation was to forego docketing any amendments to the comprehensive plan for 2020. Frankly, the recommendation there was based upon staff's assessment of the current work plan, which I've summarized in your Agenda Bill, and really just an assessment that we had enough on our plate already, and additional amendments might not make sense for 2020. In addition to the legislative work, we have a lot of work underway, kind of outside of the legislative realm, and maybe this more visible aspect of our department, we're engaged in the organizational assessment. We anticipate one or two large commercial mixed-use buildings for our review team to focus on in the next year or so. Planning Commission took the staff's recommendation into account. They did make a recommendation to you to docket two potential comp plan amendment items. And recall, we're just with a docketing exercise agreeing to either put this on to the legislative work plan for next year or not. We're not actually deciding on the substance of the amendments tonight. The First Amendment was related to economic development policies and goals around economic development on Mercer Island, and the Planning Commission did engage in some of the same discussion frankly you engaged in about a week ago, related to developing an economic development plan versus putting a placeholder, if you will, onto the docket for that discussion in 2020 as part of your comprehensive plan. My understanding of the Planning Commission's discussion was really, there's not necessarily a need for both. So, if the City Council believes that they're intending to pursue an economic development plan in 2020 or the foreseeable future, a comprehensive plan amendment discussion was not really warranted at this, at this point. The second item was related to establishing goals and policies supporting the planting of trees in the public right of way, for the purposes of carbon sequestration, shade, to reduce urban island, heat island effect, and wildlife habitat. As part of that, to address the concern staff had expressed over resource, the Planning Commission also recommended that the City Council direct staff to delay the review and report back on the 2017 Residential Development Standards Code Amendment, and delay that at least until 2021. So, the Planning Commission recommendation in front of you, oh, pardon me. Procedurally, we do have to set the comprehensive plan amendment docket for 2020 by December 31st of this year. The options before you, of course, tonight are to adopt the Planning Commission's recommended docket, adopt it with changes, or decline to docket any items for further review. So, what I've put on the screen, of course, is the Planning Commission's recommendation, which is really what I'm providing to you this evening.
All right. Counsel, any questions? Bruce?
Just a simple one. What was staff's reaction to the Planning Commission's changes?
Well, I think the Planning Commission was attempting to respond in good, good faith to the staff's concern about the amount of items that we have on our agenda for 2020, and really looking forward into 2021. I have concerns about the amount of staff time and Planning Commission time, and to some extent, the City Council's distraction with these legislative items in 2020. So, my recommendation remains the same as what I articulated to the Planning Commission back in October, but I'm also trying to articulate their recommendation to you.
Mayor, if I may just follow up on that comment, the recommendations are certainly priority work items. Neither of these work items have to be done through a comprehensive plan amendment. There are other ways this work can be completed. And so, my recommendation is to forego docketing these items and consider these two suggestions, along with all of these work items, as part of our planning session discussion in January. I think it's most appropriate to queue these up alongside the myriad of priorities and projects that we have on our list, not only for 2020, but even looking ahead to 2021, and discuss where these might land. So, my recommendation, my, many thanks to the Planning Commission. I know a considerable amount of thought went into preparing these recommendations, and we've heard public comment, particularly recently, around economic development, that this is a priority. Just a final thought, that does not need to be done through a comprehensive plan amendment. You can do economic development planning in another manner.
Wendy?
So, does this CFC item stay active, inactive, and where do those applicants stand in this process versus the deadline that we just extended into February? Can you tell me how those two or three items interact at this point?
There is no proposal at the moment that I'm aware of related to the comprehensive plan amendments for the community facilities discussion, the CFC discussion. There is a pending code amendment discussion, which was actually initiated by those organizations back in 2017, when they applied for the comprehensive plan amendments. That code amendment, that legislative action, was put on pause by the City Council in August of this year. City Council directed Planning Commission to evaluate a problem statement, evaluate alternative approaches, and report back. At the moment, I'm anticipating that you'll receive that report back sometime in February of 2020, after the new council is seated. The question for the council at that time is, do you agree with the problem statement? Do you agree with the conceptual proposed approach, or is this something that no further action is needed on? If the community organizations believe a separate distinct code amendment needs to be applied for in the intervening two months, they would have the opportunity to do so.
We actually had Bruce, and then Benson and Lisa.
I've had one shot already, though, so maybe go to them and come back to me.
Okay. Benson, Lisa, Bruce.
So, Evan, I mean, you mentioned at least a couple of times now that the reason for your concern about these code amendments, or the comp plan amendments, is the lack of staff resources, or we, you've said that more than once. I guess the city managers have said that as well. I'm a little concerned that if it doesn't stay as a comp plan amendment and goes into the planning session or what have you, is that, the lack of resources, is that still going to be an issue? And if so, everything seems to be being pushed down. I mean, I'm concerned, the lack of resources. Like, it's a real issue, but is it going to be the rationale for pushing everything down in terms of, for trying to prioritize economic development, or the, you know, the, I'm sorry, the other comp plan amendment? I'm concerned that the rationale being given now is just going to continue to be given during our planning session.
Maybe, maybe let me frame it slightly differently, Councilmember Wong. We have a number of priorities, work plan items that are queued up, far more work than we have resources to deliver in 2020. That's not just staff resources, that's Planning Commission time, that's council time, other board and commission time. So, what I'm asking is, as an alternative to a comprehensive plan amendment, I would recommend that both of these items be taken to the Planning Commission and put alongside all of your other priorities so that the council may look at everything and make an informed decision about the work plan priorities. I don't know, sitting here today, if these two items would rise above the other items that are on our work plan. And effectively, by docketing that work, they do rise above. If the council feels differently, we certainly support your direction. But what I'm suggesting is neither of these items need to be comprehensive plan amendments. So, it's something for you to consider. And also, you know, to discuss resources in January at our planning session, if, if we do not have capacity, one way or the other, to accomplish this work, that's also a good time for us to talk about how we might resource properly to get these items done according to your desired schedule.
Good. Lisa, then Bruce?
So, moving on to item number two, and a thanks on the recommendation, where the Planning Commission recommends that community planning and development staff delay the review and report back on the 2017 Residential Development Standards Code Amendment for another year. What is kind of the level of effort in, in performing that review and report back? And what is the, what is the point of doing that? Because I wasn't here in 2017, and
Of course.
Kind of not. I just need a little bit, getting up to speed on that.
I'll touch on the second question first, if I may. When the City Council adopted the Residential Development Standards Amendments in 2017, I believe, September, there was a desire to essentially evaluate the suite of amendments, three years after their effective date, to determine their effect on residential development on Mercer Island. The exact scope of that evaluation was, was left undefined at the time. So, really, my, my first action around that discussion will be to set a scope with the City Council. I'm anticipating likely late Q2 of 2020, for then the evaluation to occur in Q3 and Q4. At the moment, I'm anticipating that there is a community outreach effort, both on, you know, if you will, the residential neighborhood side of things and the builder side of things, perhaps evaluating our, our staff's assessment of it as well. I would anticipate that we will provide data to that effort as well, looking at how many building permits have been issued, the effect of the new regulations on those building permits, to the extent we can quantify them. What I expect out of that exercise is perhaps a set of recommended changes or a status quo recommendation. And that, that's really something I don't have defined at this point. Does that sufficiently answer your question, council member?
Yeah, it does. Could I, could I ask a follow up, though?
Sure.
So, to the extent that those amendments went into effect in 2017, were there permits and projects in queue under the old code, so that we would only really be getting data under the new code for 2018 and 2019?
So, applications received prior to the November 2017 effective date of that ordinance would be regulated by the old code, so to speak.
And that was like a three month, two or three month?
Two or three month window, I think, we provided, between September and November.
By the time, between the time it was passed and the time it went into effect?
The, the assessment, I believe, is intended to really pick up the effect of the applications after that code went into effect. There have been a relatively few new house applications that have been built and finalized. So, from, from very start of the process, all the way through a very end of that construction exercise, we have seen a fair number of additions and alterations. Hope to see a few more, frankly, before I get to the point where I'm reporting back to you.
Thank you. Good. Bruce?
Benson and Lisa's questions sort of got at what I was going to ask, too, but I'm actually sort of wanted to tag on to that. So, in your last comments, then, I think, the question was going to be with regards to this delay of the residential development standards code amendment review, do staff think that makes sense or not? And I think I just heard you sort of allude to, yeah, it might be better to wait a bit and have a bit more data. But can you either correct me on that or expand on that?
I, to be direct about it, I have a little bit of a mixed opinion. In terms of actual facts and data, it would make sense to wait, because we have not had, in my assessment, sufficient building permit submittals to provide you a real quantifiable result. I think you also have a couple of different segments in the community who have concerns or comments on the residential development standards and its effect. And delaying the opportunity for those constituents, if you will, to provide feedback may not be our wisest choice. I've heard certainly from the building community that it is harder to build on Mercer Island, and there's a significant concern about the viability of some lots. I don't know if that's compelling to the City Council or not, but I think it's a comment we can, we can foresee at this point. I've heard certainly from some of the neighborhoods, if you will. I've heard certainly from some of the neighborhoods, if you will, that they're concerned that the tree regulations do not go far enough. And you'll recall that this was a fairly meaty subject three years ago. So I, I think you'll receive a fair amount of, of community feedback and opinion. I like to try and apply facts to it as much as I can. And I think our, our single-family home construction has been down for the last two years. Some of it as an effect of this, some of it as an effect of regional slowdown in single-family home construction.
Dave?
Yeah, Evan, I, you, you keep answering everybody's questions ahead of the questions, so, well, well done.
Thank you.
Qualitatively, the sentiment I hear you say, so there's sort of two groups, there's the folks that are trying to build and remodel, and you generally hear from the homeowners themselves, and then there's the builder group, which you, you interact with, I'm guessing, both fairly regularly anyway. And is the sentiment that it has become more, people feel more restricted in what they're able to do, both on remodels as well as new builds?
I primarily heard it related to new builds, new construction. It's not purely a builder-driven exercise on new construction. We do see property owners who really wish to tear down and rebuild of their own interest and have a builder on contract, if you will. I hear less in the way of complaints around the remodels, though they are often trickier, again, anecdotally, from a staff perspective, because the way we regulate gross floor area, for example, changed in a fairly significant way. And renovating an older home built under one set of rules makes that a complicated exercise to apply new rules to.
Yeah, and then I guess I'm, I'm a little surprised that we would push it out, because it feels like if we're getting that kind of feedback, and we did, we did two things that were kind of on the cutting edge. One was the gross floor area change, and the other was hardscape or impervious service change into hardscape versus softscape percentages. That one, no one's ever tried. We're sort of the first man on the moon there. So it feels a little odd to me that we would do two big things that seem to have had an impact, not directing this, you may be directing it as council, and we wouldn't take a earlier opportunity to reevaluate them. I certainly get the workload component of it, but that ends up being a bit of a test rush game of what you do versus what you don't do. But it, it just feels like we made a huge shift. And to wait now, that, would that be three years that we would wait between adoption and review?
I believe it would be four.
Four years. That feels like a lot to me, and I didn't know if the council has a reaction to that. It feels like we're putting, making people wait too long to review some decisions that we thought were our, our best guess and our best efforts and may require some tweaking.
Okay, we've got Benson, I see Bruce wants to go, but I'm going to jump in there as well. So Benson, oh, and Wendy, okay. Benson's actually already spoken, too, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So we'll go Benson, Bruce, Wendy, Debbie.
Well, I'm going to actually, this is Councilmember Wiesentiner's last meeting, and I'm going to support him. I, I think it's about time, you know? I, I am a little concerned, because I remember that discussion, I mean, we did spend some time talking, making sure that there was this look back, that we had this period to look back and, and review what we had done. Can you elaborate on the amount of staff time do you think this review would take? I guess I can understand the more concern about, you know, the economic development plan and what have you, but here, you've already indicated that there are not that many homes that have perhaps been built under this, under the new code. And so I'm just curious, how much time do you think this analysis would take?
I don't know that I have a, a great answer to give you, Councilmember. I anticipate it being a major effort, if you will, for us in the second half of the year, along with a few other major efforts. So I, I can certainly speak to the others. But I would anticipate, and this is a scope to be set by the City Council at a later date, but I, I would suspect a community outreach meeting or two with perhaps different targeted groups would be appropriate to gather some of that quantitative information or feedback in a more thoughtful way. I think there's probably a communication campaign, and I think there's then some staff analysis of permits issued. Oddly, the staff analysis of permits issued could be the biggest time suck, because it just requires someone to churn through permit paper documents, which is, which is a little challenging. You end up doing a review a second time. So, I, I'm dancing around the question, because I don't have an actual number I could give you or something more concrete at this point. That will be the conversation I want to have with that scope.
All right, so Bruce, Wendy, and then me. Or when, you guys can sort it out.
I'm just curious how the department evaluation that you're doing now and kind of in the first quarter might help inform these development standards, if any? Like, would, would our analysis of staff doing X, Y, Z help inform how this code is being interpreted or executed? Are those two at all related?
It, it's a great question. I hadn't actually considered the interplay, Councilmember, directly. The, the org assessment, we're essentially in the first phase of a three-phase exercise. And I think we're starting to crystallize some of the areas I would like to focus additional scrutiny on. Internal efficiencies is certainly an aspect of that. I think there's probably a balancing conversation going on, and you're seeing some of it tonight, between what's our, what's our work plan, what's our, our resource balance, and how are we kind of being thoughtful about managing our time over the coming years? The actual administration of the RDS regulations, I'm not sure it has a, a great effect on our permit review timelines. I think it makes some of the reviews more challenging, especially for an applicant who really, you know, is trying to build their dream home at some level. And the regulations may modify that in a way that they, they support or don't support. I'll also observe, and this is an effect, I think, again, more regionally, some of the easier lots in the area are starting to disappear. And so we start to see home construction on more challenging sites, or sites where you're really trying to maximize a development, where it's, where it's not previously been maximized. And that can make these conversations a little bit harder as well. I don't know that that's going to come out of the org assessment directly, but I suspect it would come out of a combination of both the org assessment and our evaluation of the RDS.
Okay. Bruce?
I'm wrestling with, you know, Dave's comment, supported by Benson, that we should review this, resonates with me, because I certainly have heard from some who have expressed a, a real concern about this. But at the same time, Evan, I'm concerned that if you don't have some way to put a pretty tight fence around what's being done here, we could find ourselves, the council then could find itself essentially revisiting the entire residential development standard and, and into a really big and very messy piece of work. And so I guess I'm looking to you to maybe offer some level of belief in whether a fence can be put around this and kept, kept under control, or whether it's, it's kind of really very likely to end up being as if the whole Pandora's Box has been reopened, in which case I would really urge wait a year, because this is a budget year next year and, and you're going to have your hands full.
And respectfully, Councilmember, it's an election year the year after. The, there is not always a great time to do this kind of exercise, and I, I mean it respectfully. The...
You're mumbling.
I'll be fired tomorrow, probably. The, no, joking aside, drawing a fence around it, if you will, I think the question really for the council in 2020 is, what's the scope of the exercise? Are we looking for a report back, if you will, a summary of, of the effect, but not necessarily with follow-up action items? Or are they looking for, is that council looking for a broader recommendation from the city staff? At this point, as, as I think the council can probably ascertain, I'm, I'm trying to be very conscious about managing resources. So my recommendation will likely be based on, do I think we're achieving the effect that the council, as I understood it originally, intended to achieve in 2017? Are there obvious problems being brought up by the community, the staff assessment, or the, the neighbor assessment, if you will? And then is there an actual remedy that we could action on? So, for example, if we all agree that tree protection is not working perfectly, but there is no remedy that I can bring you that actually works better, I think additional assessment and thought is warranted before the council cracks open a code again. I'll also say, I, I've certainly heard from the community that there's concerns about some of the minor code amendments that we've seen in the intervening two or three years. I may disagree with some of the assessment of those code amendments, but I think there's a good thoughtful conversation to be had there. So my impression, high level, there's potentially tweaks around the edges. I'm not aware of wholesale change that needs to occur. I'll stand corrected if the council so tells me.
Mayor, may I just make a, a comment? So, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to you to delay a work item, and they did so to allow some resources to be freed up to pursue the items that they recommend being docketed. Tonight, if you would like to docket one or both items, it does not require you to pass the second motion. In fact, I recommend you don't. We're not prepared tonight to wrestle this, do we move forward with the residential development standard review or not? That was something that Evan and I anticipated would be fully scoped and discussed with your 2020 council, as part of the planning commis, uh, planning session or outside of that. So just to give some clarity, they made this recommendation. That does not mean you need to delay this work item and make that decision tonight. It's probably something that the next council would be considering, in addition to the entire work plan for the Planning Commission and the Planning Department.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to take a turn, and then we've got Dave and Saleem. Okay, so, I want to respond to that, because for all that there wasn't a fully thought-out scope that came here tonight, there was a commitment from this council, actually, to come back after X amount of time with a review and assessment. So, I understand and appreciate that there's a heavy workload, et cetera, but that that had been a fair and clear expectation. So, that said, there isn't one. What worries me, I'm split, but what worries me is that there was a distinct commitment from this council, not only to the builder community, but also to the homeowner community, to look not at the major, but at some of the quote-unquote amendments or tweaks or around the edges. And if you go back and listen to that council meeting, and I suspect read some of the agenda, you'll find out that it wasn't just an open playing field. It wasn't, let's just go open it up again in three or four years. I think there was some verbiage that was there. And the reason that that is super important to me was, one, because as Dave said, there was some, there were some new things that were done. We also knew that a lot came in at the end, and that we didn't necessarily know in aggregate what the impact would be. And then the final thing that I'll call out there is, you know, for all that has been an election year, when I was out door battling, there was a lot of discussion from both builders and homeowners on all sides of this. It wasn't just a slam dunk one way or the other, the tree code is too loose, it was also too restrictive, et cetera, et cetera. So there is an awareness out there in the community, and I was certainly, I have to be honest, telling them that this was the year that there was going to be a review. So, you know, I will obviously have to manage that for myself. And the other thing, too, that I would, I would just encourage people to recognize is that there will be the opportunity for staff, for council, and for the public to recognize that, that there are priorities, and that there are occasionally times when, for all that there are very important items, people's homes really strike them to the core. This is not only their primary source of, of wealth in many cases, but it's also very, very important to them. And the extent to which we're postponing some of these decisions or these reviews is also striking at the core of some people's lives. So, you know, I'm torn, I understand, but at this point, I am feeling like it was with confidence and very strong intent that we put forward that there be a review of the residential code standards this coming year. So that's probably where I'm going to go. But anyway, that's my two cents. We, we have Saleem next.
So just to tag along with that, to understand what you're proposing is that we do docket it, to give the council the flexibility to have it within the comp plan amendment and then scope it at the next year's planning session?
I, I apologize if I, I misspoke, so let me walk back. What I was suggesting to you this evening is that when the Planning Commission brought forward the recommendation, they said, "Council, in order to make space for this docketing, docketing this work, we recommend you do not, you do not do the residential development standards." What I'm telling you this evening is if you choose to docket one or both items, you do not need to make a decision on whether or not residential development standards are reviewed next year. That you just, we're assuming it stays on the work plan until the next council tells us otherwise. So what I'm saying is you don't have to accept that second recommendation. Did I say that?
The problem is that the second recommendation is a recommendation to not do something, and we're recommending to do something. So, and also the, the attachment has two items on it. So, as I'm understanding it, giving the future council the flexibility to do what they might decide to do is to pass the Exhibit A with three items on it, is that right?
Perhaps. If, if you pass, if you docket the items and omit the second motion, you will be setting up the next council to have a conversation about potentially what comes off of the work plan if we don't do it here this evening.
Can you just answer in a straightforward question? If we wanted this residential development standards code review on the docket, what would we say?
May I, yeah, may I interject? Pardon me, Mayor, I, I believe I can answer your question. You do not need to take any action around the 2017 residential development standards tonight, at all.
So it's about taking it?
It is already on the work plan for 2020. The only action you might take around the 2017 residential development standards is to pull it off the work plan for next year. And I, I believe the city manager is saying, please don't do that. Talk about it in the planning session. The other item on your, your agenda is a Resolution 1569, which would place two new items on the work plan for 2020, one related to economic development, one related to a tree program. I'll be a little bit more direct than I was initially. The tree program likely can be addressed at the planning session by direction to the city manager about implementing the tree program, and does not in of itself require a comp plan amendment. The economic development policies probably are best developed through an economic development plan that is properly resourced. And when I, when I say properly resourced, and, and pardon me, Councilmember Wong, I didn't answer this very well earlier, we really need consultant support to do an economic development plan properly. And that's, that to me is the resource piece of this, not so much the staff component. And I think, again, that is a, a discussion that's properly held at the planning session for the, the council in 2020. So this is the basis for the staff recommendation to not docket code, uh, comprehensive plan amendments. It is distinct from the Planning Commission's recommendation.
I think I understand, but I see Bruce with his hand up, and then Benson? Or Benson, do you have a clarifying question?
Yes.
Go for it.
I just want to make sure I understand. I mean, it sounds like the rationale for delaying the review to 2021 in part was to free up resources.
Yes.
Okay, so if we don't adopt any of the comp plan amendments, presumably there's now resources that otherwise would have been dedicated there that can now be dedicated to reviewing the residential development standards in 2020?
That's correct, Councilmember.
And, and to the mayor's point, and also again to Councilmember Wiesentiner's, I recall, part of the discussion for doing this review was to, to identify any unintended consequences, because these were new items. And so I, I do think it is important, and again, also to the mayor's point earlier, we did make that commitment to the community. Now, yes, things can change because of resources and what have you, but if we're now freeing up resources because we're potentially not adopting the comp plan amendments, I think I would go back in favoring a review of the residential standards in 2020.
So we have Bruce, and then Lisa.
I'm looking for some staff assistance in crafting a motion that would not have these two items included in it, the two proposed by the Planning Commission. I'm not sure what that motion looks like, since it's now, does, does the whole thing go away, or does it remain and simply get crafted with language that says there are no? And of course, I have no idea what the council...
Why do we do nothing?
I have no idea whether the council will be... And of course, I have no idea whether the council will be supportive of this, but I can't make a motion without knowing what the language should be.
The question is, do we do nothing?
Counsel, if I may, I would recommend that you just do a motion not to docket any items to, for the 2020 comprehensive plan, just a verbal motion and a vote that way. So that that way, it's on the record that you took action on the matter.
Do we actually have to reject the resolution?
No, you do not have to reject the resolution, but I do, instead, I do recommend that you do a motion to not docket any items, comprehensive amendment items for the 2020 year.
Okay. Does that give you?
It gives me what I need.
Why don't we take Lisa's comment, and then I'm sensing a motion coming on. Okay, Lisa.
I think, um, let's do the motion. I really don't have any questions. I think I'm at peace with where this is gonna come out.
Okay, Bruce.
So, I would move to not docket any items for the comprehensive plan amendment process? I'm not quite sure what the right word is there, for 2020.
Second.
And I'll speak to that. Thank you, if I may, simply to say, I don't want in any way to disrespect the Planning Commission. They clearly put some work and some, and some careful thought into this, and I think we should be very grateful to them for that. But given what we've learned from staff about the potential to address these items without pushing them into the comprehensive plan docket, I think that makes good sense, and I think we can have confidence that the council will give these fair consideration at the planning session and put them where they, where they belong within the priority list of all the things that have to get done next year.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that in supporting the motion to not docket these items, I would echo the thought that we can do this work if we feel like it's important. We can appropriately prioritize the review of the 2017 amendments, and I think that's all work to be done in January. I think that's when the discussion is most productive, so.
Okay, does anybody else want to speak to this? So, all in favor of not adding any items to the docket for 2020, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Great. All right, we got through all our double negatives, et cetera. So, we now actually move on to what I believe is our last item of regular business for the year, which is Agenda Bill 5643, the Code of Ethics Revisions, third reading. So, for that, we welcome Chief of Administration, Ally.
Good evening, council. Last item, last meeting. Why isn't that, oh, it's already open. And the third time's a charm, right? Okay. So, tonight, we are on the third reading and hopefully adoption of the Code of Ethics revisions. The changes between the second reading and third reading, we removed the definition of relative. We clarified the conflict of interest section by adding the official's spouse, and we did retain employee per state law. We added a section to address council members' appointments to boards and commissions and committees. We added a standalone section for mayor and deputy mayor appointments removal. We revised the protection against retaliation section, and we added that the city will reimburse reasonable legal fees by the, for the official if the complaint is dismissed. We added that complaints may only be brought against sitting or current officials. Added if the official leaves office before the complaint is resolved, no further action will be taken. And city manager references were removed from resolution and the Code of Ethics statement. So, tonight, we need direction from the council on the amount that an official can be reimbursed if their violation is unfounded and is dismissed, if they were to retain legal assistance. That is entirely up to you. We can provide you a parameter, but...
Well, I think the question, the first question I would start with, and then certainly go to the council, is does that, does there have to be a number inserted there, or could we use a word such as reasonable?
Reasonable would mean that someone would need to interpret what reasonable means.
That's just the city attorney.
Yeah. And again, that's getting staff back into making a decision about this.
Okay. Lisa?
Yeah, a couple of questions on that. I would appreciate the staff's input on a parameter, but do, does this provision exist in other city codes, and what is their maximum, if you've researched that?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I mean, it, what, this wasn't in our code originally, recovery of fees or costs at all. We added it at second reading, at the request, and then third reading, we are adding language about reimbursement. So, I can have interim city attorney, Bo Park, speak a little bit about it.
From experience, based on the, you know, the attorneys that we hired to resolve some ethic, Code of Ethics complaint matters, you know, both matters that were reviewed by outside council cost the city about $5,000 each. So, I think that a number of $5,000 would be where the ballpark is as far as how much it would cost for an official to reasonably have a complaint defended by an attorney.
That seems cheap, but that's the number I was thinking about as well, honestly.
Maybe I'm being too cheap. I was thinking about 25. Anyway, the whole idea is to indemnify the official who has been subject to a complaint that has been dismissed and, or with the city council has taken no action. So, you know, I'm okay with 5,000. I actually was thinking of a smaller number. I'm trying to be mindful of the city's, you know, doesn't have a, you know, a lot of money. But again, this is really an indemnification provision, so, anywhere from 2,500 to 5,000 would be okay, I guess.
Point of clarification, so this is per complaint filed?
That's correct.
Okay, so this isn't, each of you gets a punch card for $5,000, you know?
Nope.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. I guess, is there any sort of a provision? I mean, it seems to me that it's fair for the city official to get reimbursed for some legal fees that they might incur defending what is essentially maybe a baseless or even bad faith complaint. Is there any sort of a countervailing provision in here? And I'm thinking the answer's gonna be no, to prevent those types of complaints from being brought in the first place.
Well, the thing is, we have the Code of Ethics, now, ethics officer, who's the gatekeeper in determining whether those complaints are valid or not. So, that's, you know, to the extent that we have one, the Code of Ethics officer would be the person.
Oh, so it would have had to clear the Code of Ethics officer and go to a hearing?
To go to a hearing, yes.
Which would still come at a cost to the city because we're paying the Code of Ethics officer.
Correct.
Just over $100 per hour. You know, I want to speak to this one because people say stories resonate. Well, let's, let's, let's take a story that happened within the last few months. I had three complaints filed with the PDC by somebody who at any given point had 40 complaints filed against various people within the state. Did that cost me legal fees? It absolutely did. This was a serial. It is a serial complainant, and I wouldn't want to underestimate the cost, the emotional burden, and frankly, the damage that is done to one's heart, soul, and reputation by this. So, to Lisa's question, what I'm taking is, is there a way to disincent people from taking a bucket load of nonsense and dropping it on the city where every single one of them has to go to a complaints officer for over 100 bucks an hour? So, I'm giving a kind of a raw example, but I think the extent to which there's the potential for a gateway, I would be all for it. I doubt there is. I suspect it falls very similar to the public records request, which is that there is the right for any citizen to go forth and request, you know, public records and/or express their opinion that there's been an ethics violation. But to me, I'd take as an example the person in the state who at one point had 40 complaints filed against a particular profile of candidate with the Public Disclosure Commission, and I would hate to see that happen at any scale here on Mercer Island. So, I guess the question is to the city attorney, is there any way to?
Well, you know, that way, it would, if you want to avoid the cost, it would, you know, that burden would fall on the staff or other council members to take the role of determining what is a baseless complaint and what is, you know, a complaint that's based on potential violation. So, again, that would shift the burden to what's currently under our current code, which put a lot of the staff and council members in a tough spot during the summer. So, that's why the alternative to that was to hire somebody from, from, non-related to the, to the city to make that determination. And you know, and that's partly the risk and, you know, the cost of having a Code of Ethics. Certainly, the city does not need to have a Code of Ethics, its own Code of Ethics adopted in, as an ordinance. But if you choose to do so, I mean, there are some risks and costs that are associated with it.
Okay. So, I just would like to also clarify that every single complaint that was filed was dismissed. Thank you, Bruce.
I would point out that I had a bit of similar question in my first reading of this, and in the section complaint requirements, I'm on page, well, I'm on the revised version, page eight, item, complaint process, item one. And I read initially sort of cursorily this last sentence, which says, "It must be signed under penalty of perjury by the persons submitting it in a manner consistent with chapter 9A dot 72 RCW." And I then went and actually read that language and was, actually, I came away impressed with how strong the language of that RCW is. It is a misdemeanor to a felony to state something in a claim that is false and sign it. So, I think we can take some solace in the fact that this language gives, should give pause to anybody who is, is thinking that it's okay to create a complaint, which is demonstrably false.
Thanks for doing that research.
So, I'm gonna suggest we put $5,000 in the questionable spot.
And anybody have any alternative suggestions? People comfortable thumbs up with a 5,000 for the sake of this reading? Okay, any, are there other questions? I mean, I know we've been focusing primarily on this particular element. Are there any other comments or questions, feedback?
Councilmember Lassit does have one.
I do have one. I don't know whether the appropriate time to do it is after the motion or before, but I'll just, I'll surface it right now, and you can decide how you want to handle it. On page 11 of the revised version, limitations, which is the next-to-last paragraph on the page, it says, "Complaints based on this Code of Ethics may only be brought against current officials and must be submitted within three years from the date of violation." My opinion, three years is long, and I say that because these are time-sensitive, time-related issues when they come up, and to wait three years, I mean, I'll give you the sort of worst fear I have is that somebody spots something, they think, oh, that's a violation, but I'll sit on that until election season rather than bringing that up now. And that, to me, is, it would not be within the sort of intent of this. If you got a, if you spot a problem, bring it up, but don't wait a year or two years or three years to do it. And so, I would suggest shortening this language to one or two years. And if there's not an appetite for that, that's fine, but that would be my suggestion. And I don't care whether it's one or two, but shorter than three.
Counsel, any other feedback on that? I'll be honest, I generally concur with Bruce. I would probably put it at two years, 18 months to two years.
I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go shorter than two years, but I could go from three to two.
Bruce?
I mean, because there is, I mean, and Bo can correct me if I'm wrong on this, or Benson can. Any attorney in the audience can do. But, you know, I think that if, if the violation were somehow concealed, there would be a two years from the time that the violation was discovered. So, it's not as like a flash cut, two years, and you're done. So, there's a lot of serious causes of action that can be brought in civil court that are limited to two years, so that...
So, two years is...
That's why I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? I'm seeing a lot of nodding.
I'm okay with two years, but I'm just curious whether or not our interim city attorney, what the rationale was for three years when this thing was drafted?
It was just borrowed from the code that we created, the base for this Code of Ethics, and three years is generally the, you know, the, as far as statute of limitation goes, the most common statute of limitation. So, there's no specific reason why it has to be three, two, or four years.
I'm seeing some general nods with two years.
Okay, so we'll make those two changes, the $5,000 limit and two years. Were there any other questions?
I do have a question. I was, sorry, I have to find where it was. It's for point of clarification. On page 10, D3, admonition. An admonition shall be, or, did I say that right? Edmonum? Yeah. Shall be an oral, non-public statement made by the mayor or his/her designee, et cetera. It's, it's oral and non-public. Would it somehow then be captured in, in the records? Because it is oral and it is non-public. So, this would just be?
What specifically is said would not be captured, but the council action, the direction for it to be, the choice that you're making for the council action, that would be, that would be the motion that would be made by the council.
To just, just to give them an admonition?
Mm-hmm.
But it wouldn't be what to say?
Correct.
Et cetera.
Okay.
All right, I think we're...
Just gonna make my motion.
We're maybe ready for...
Move to adopt ordinance number 19C dash 20 to amend chapter 2.60 of the Mercer Island City Code, revising the Code of Ethics and pass, oh, and pass resolution 1572, revising the Code of Ethics statement as, do you want it as modified, as a modified?
Yeah.
In discussion this evening.
Second. It's been first and second, and any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, and that concludes regular business for the year.
Should we, special thanks to Ally.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got through it.
That was a lot of work in a short period of time. Thank you.
Yes, super, super. Okay, now we're moving on to other business, and that one item is actually that Councilmember Wong is attending the December 11th Public Issues Committee, the PIC meeting for Sound Cities Association, and the agenda for the evening includes a vote on the board, on board elections. Councilmember Wong has offered to serve as our voting delegate, which to me certainly makes sense, but we would need consensus to give him that power. Anybody have any questions and/or have any concerns with that?
Otherwise, you have to attend the meeting.
You have to go tomorrow night. All right, Bruce.
Is Councilmember Wong also nominating himself for a position on the SCA board? Because if he's not, I think he should.
I am not, but Councilmember Wyker is, and I will be nominating her.
Oh, well, very good then.
Super. All right, Benson? Super. All right. Benson, I think you've, you've got that power now. We don't have reports on the agenda tonight, but I don't know if anybody has anything in particular that they want to report. Okay.
If you haven't purchased your Christmas tree, I think you might be in trouble. I don't know where they are, but, well, all I'm saying is that...
Benson will go out and chop one down for you.
No, no, no. I was, I was, I was there on Saturday, and Saturday was the last, I didn't realize it. Saturday was the last tree delivery. So, and they were selling like hotcakes. So I don't know what the deal is. I don't, do you, do you know Jesse?
I believe the lot is still open until the trees are gone, and there are, there's still trees out there.
They'll all be there, thanks to Benson's stern warning, that we're all going to be in trouble with no presents for Christmas.
Okay. And I'm just going to reiterate the thanks to all the community members who supported the tree lighting. It was, it was great. It wasn't even raining, which was remarkable. And of course, to all the firefighters and the staff that put together a great event at the, the fire station afterwards. So with that, we are done with other business, and now we go on to our final, final item, a very special business, which is the resolution of appreciation for, for Bruce, for Dave, and then myself, too. So for that, we welcome Chief of Administration, Ally Speitz, which is, the number of titles Ally's had in the last year's been remarkable, but this is a great one to end on.
Okay, good evening. It's my honor and privilege tonight to emcee our festivities as we say thank you to three councilmembers who have served our community with open minds, grace, and fortitude. This is the last council meeting for Mayor Debbie Burtland, Councilmember Bruce Basset, and Councilmember Dave Wiesentiner, as their terms come to an end in twenty-one days.
But who's counting?
Not counting. So we have prepared resolutions of acknowledgement and commendation for their service to the Mercer Island community that recognize their work during their tenures. But before we get to those, I wanted to recognize the massive amount of work this council has accomplished. Some of these items took a meeting or two, others took six or seven readings to adopt. And here are just a few of the items from the last few years. Aubrey Davis Park Master Plan adoption, Code Compliance Program update, Code of Ethics for Officials' adoption, tonight, creation of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Critical Areas Ordinance update, Fire Station ninety-two construction project closeout, First Last Mile Solutions with Lyft, Uber, and Lime Bike pilots, Groveland Park repairs, Island Crest Park North Outfield project, the new town center vision and development and design standards, purchase and sale agreement for the Tully's BP ARCO site, and MOU for proposed commuter parking and mixed-use project in town center, residential development standards code update, solid waste contract with Recology, Sound Transit Settlement Agreement negotiations, and a thrift stop, thrift shop staffing transition plan. These are just a fraction of the items the council has considered over just the last four years. We're grateful for the council's thoughtful questions, passionate debate, and collaborative action on so many important issues that this community faces. I would now like to welcome Deputy Mayor Saleem Nice to the podium to recognize Councilmember Wiesentiner's service.
So, a resolution, an acknowledgement, and commendation for Dave Wiesentiner's service to the Mercer Island community. Whereas, Dave Wiesentiner has served the citizens of Mercer Island with distinction in public office as a member of the Mercer Island City Council since January twenty sixteen. During Dave's term in office, the city council has met one hundred and sixty times, adopted eighty-nine ordinances, and sixty-four resolutions, and reviewed over five hundred agenda bills on a wide variety of subjects. Dave served as city council liaison on the Disability Board, the Open Space Conservancy Trust, and Utility Board, and is a member of the Public Safety Council Subcommittee, Sound Transit Light Rail Station Design Committee, Council School Board Partnership Committee, and Mercer Island PTA Advocacy Committee. Dave also served regionally on YRA eight Salmon Recovery Council and the King County Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force. Dave genuinely cared about the city staff and offered his help when and where needed. He was particularly supportive of the Marine Patrol Program, where he had a front-row seat to the operation during the annual seafar event, something that he enjoyed a lot. With Dave's newfound freedom, he won't have to rush back from international business trips to make council meetings, and he will be able to spend his Tuesday evenings at home with his family. We will miss Dave's humor and candid demeanor when dealing with tense issues, his eloquent summaries of council discussion, and his determination to have council meetings end early. And finally, staff and council can now return to the game of Name That Tune. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Mercer Island, on behalf of its community, the city council commends Dave Wiesentiner for his distinguished public service and extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for his time and many contributions to Mercer Island. The money.
Oh, great.
Here's, here's your resolution.
Thank you.
And your box. Ooh.
Look at that.
We'll have to get it out.
I'm going to have to build a new shelf.
Well, there you are. I'll hold it while you give your speech.
Oh, I'm giving a speech?
Well, acceptance speech is kind of normal, acceptance speech.
Oh, well, I got to get my stuff.
Yeah, at least it's prepared.
No, this will be super fast. Oh, thank you very much. This was not what I expected it to be, the last four years. I, you know, I'd done a lot of volunteering throughout my life, and I thought this was just another way to volunteer, and it is. But what you realize is, you think you have all the answers, and then you go and try and do it. And I think as Bruce and Debbie and Benson and Dan Grousne quickly educated me that you need to know what you're talking about before you start talking. And so that was a good education for me personally, to begin to learn the real complexities of how a civil government operates. And I think the biggest lesson that I learned is, just as we all are in our private sector jobs, you have tremendous talent that you're always trying to attract and retain. And there is no less, and I think in many cases, a much higher level of talent in the public sector. And as I have had a chance to work with folks like Evan, who, you know, sort of stepped up through the ranks, and Jason, and, you know, Ed Holmes, and, and Steve Heitman, and some of the real fantastic leaders that the city has, it's, it's remarkable to see the level of work and performance, and frankly, creativity with really constrained budgets that people are able to do. A big thanks to, you know, particularly Ally and Kirsten, who, you know, made it through the whole Sound Transit thing with us, and Bo, and Deb, who keeps the wheels on the bus, and Jesse, wherever Jesse ran off to over there, I thought she might have escaped by now, you know, stepping into an extremely hard position, sort of with enthusiasm. And I would ask the council going forward to make her our permanent city manager, because I think you're extremely talented. And if you signed up for it, and it's this hard, it only gets better after this, I think. So you should have a shot at the real deal. A big thanks to Saleem, because I think as, as you think about different councilmembers doing different things, I, you know, tried to talk you into running the second time, and I took more than a little bit of pressure, and I'm glad you did, because I think you bring a level of precision and research to the process that we really need and is super, super useful. Awesome working with all of you guys. You know, Bruce, great, great to be able to admire you for, for really standing by what you believe, and I learned a lot there, that you, you really feel passionate despite, despite taking some slings and arrows. And it was cool to see somebody that just really stays the course on something, and, and really admire that about you. I think you, you know, you were lucky enough to retire early, but you take this as seriously as any CEO I've ever met, and that, that's a really remarkable talent. So appreciate that. And, and, you know, Debbie, having gone through the Sound Transit stuff, like, you know, this would have been the earliest night in that entire year, getting out at eight forty, and, and that never would have happened. And Benson, you know, you bring this, this level of balance to both sides of the equation, not letting everybody run away. So, so fantastic to have worked with you. Wendy, you bring a level of enthusiasm and getting out there in the community, and that's awesome. Lisa, you're new to it all, and, and we need all the help we can get. So for the new folks, I would say, you know, Jake, I'm sure the only one here, everybody else is, you know, at the bar, or whatever they're doing. I, I would say, you know, listen first, talk second. That's, that was a big lesson for me, because I really thought I was going to come in and show them all how it was done, and that, that just is not the case, that you've got a ton of smart people around you. And again, particularly the staff that, that makes the wheels run. And, and it was just a privilege to be able to work with, with so many awesome people. So thank you, guys. Good luck. And, you know, sort of my final thing is, is those of you who know I'm a literature guy from my original education, so I always like try and take a quote from a book, but this one happened to be a movie, sort of nineteen seventy-four movie, Alice Doesn't Live Here Anymore. And the line that sort of sums it up best for me is, "So long, suckers."
Congratulations. I'll bring this over for you.
Oh, you carry that for me?
Yeah.
Councilmembers, if you'd like to say a few words about Dave, you may do that. You don't have to. He won't be offended if you don't.
Everybody's reaching. So Wendy, she was first to hit the button.
First of all, Dave, thank you for your service. It's been fun, you get a point. Well, I brought three. I don't know, there's some others here. You might get to take two home. But I just want to say thank you for your service. It's been fun getting to know you. It was fun running with you. And you're just a smart, articulate, capable guy. And I'm sorry to lose you, so I hope you'll keep chiming in on the issues that you know so well. And really appreciate everything you've done to help me learn and be a better person up here. So thank you for that.
Dave, thanks for being so generous with your time about a year ago when I was first appointed, and you carved out some time to have coffee with me and tell me everything that I feared. But no, I appreciated that. In fact, everybody was generous, but, and I've, I've enjoyed serving with you on council, and best of luck. Enjoy your free Tuesday evenings.
Dave, it's been a pleasure. You have many skills, and two of them. One of them is your ability to sum up hours of discussion and get to the core of the issue. And I, it really is a skill. And so I really appreciate that, because I also agree that our meetings run too long, and so it's sometimes good to try to cut them short. The other thing that is, I'm going to miss is really your sense of humor. I mean, I think we, after long hours of meetings, sometimes we need a break. And your levity and your just, your good nature is, really comes forward, and it's, it helps, helps us get through another hour. Okay? So anyway, I'm going to miss that. I really look forward to seeing you continue being involved in the community. And I know you will. And so I appreciate your, your time on the council.
Well, you're still a neighbor. And so we'll still be seeing you. Yes, definitely echoing, the, the ability to up-level the conversation was always terrific, and usually quite, quite timely, along with a good dose of humor. But I would also say some of the strongest memories I will have was wading through that Sound Transit negotiation period. And for those of you who may or may not know, there were a lot of walks in the rain, in the dark, trying to figure this whole thing out. And there was a level of grit there that for all that we might appear, you know, to be fairly quick up here in some senses, that there were hours and hours of work, and a lot of thought, and a lot of friendship, and a lot of patience. And yeah, I'll see you around. Maybe we'll take our doctor walk again.
I don't have much to add, but I will say that we all got together and got you a box of milk chocolates.
Oh, thank you.
And signed a card, and you'll be missed, for sure.
Well, I would certainly agree with the comments that have been made, particularly the humor and, and, you know, being seatmates over here. It's, it's been nice to have your sometimes, under the microphone or under the table, levity that helped as we were listening to things go on.
Down at that end.
I, I want to point out two things, though. Ally, or the, the commendation referred to it. But for those who, who don't know, it used to be that Ally was the runaway winner in Name That Tune. And then Dave came along and set a bar that was so far above anybody else's bar that it kind of destroyed the whole thing. We ended up making him the, the person who had to run it because of that. And so you will not be missed in that respect, I think, by the staff. But it's, it's been a pleasure. And to see what a multifaceted set of talents you have has been, has been a pleasure, too. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry. Finally, one more thing. Now, can you tell us about the tricycle?
Oh. Oh, why it's a tricycle?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think that was a secret.
So I have two master's degrees, one is an MBA, and one is a master's in marketing. And so there is, I spent a bit of time figuring out what would be the most resonant image for a residential island with the demographic who mostly votes toward family issues. Boom. It was cute. And my friend did it for free. Those are the other two reasons.
Smart and resourceful. Okay. I'd now like to welcome former Mercer Island Councilmember and Washington State Representative, Tana Sen, to recognize Mayor Debbie Burtland's service.
Thank you, thank you. So Debbie, it's great to be here. It's great to be back here in the council chambers, and thrilled to be doing this resolution for you. So similar to Dave's, a resolution of acknowledgement and commendation for Debbie Burtland's service to the Mercer Island community. Whereas Debbie Burtland has served the citizens of Mercer Island with distinction in public office as a member of the Mercer Island Council since January two thousand and twelve, specifically as a council member from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fifteen, deputy mayor from twelve thousand, two thousand and sixteen to seventeen, and mayor from two thousand and eighteen to present. I'm going to make it a little bit short in some places. Debbie has served as city council liaison for the Planning Commission, Utility Board, Library Board, and the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission. She also served on the Parks and Recreation and Public Safety Council Subcommittee, as well as the I ninety Steering Committee, Diversity and Inclusion Committee, School District Advisory Board, Council School Board Committee, M I, Mercer Island School District Superintendent Advisor Council, and Mercer Island PTA Advocacy Committee. So all, for all the people out there, if you think that city council meetings are it, you are incorrect. Regionally, Debbie has served on the Puget Sound Regional Council, Eastside Transportation Partnership, Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, King County Growth Management Planning Council, and Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board. With her newfound freedom, Debbie is sure to enjoy more time swimming laps at the Mary Wait Pool, running on First Hill and in town center, training with her sixty-pound adorable puppies, and spending more time with her husband and daughters. Debbie will be remembered for her dedication to ending discrimination and promoting diversity and inclusion, her joy in celebrating grassroots community efforts and events, and fulfilling her mayoral duties with passion and grace. I personally would also like to add a few bars of my own. Debbie started her work with the city on parks and playgrounds, specifically representing Mepa in their successful efforts to add a fire truck play structure at Luther Burbank, and making it one of the first accessible playgrounds in the area. She helped ban smoking from Mercer Island parks, redid the Groveland Beach Pier, added baseball surf, turf at Island Crest Park, and most recently, helped secure state money for a master plan for the Aubrey Davis Park Master Plan. Debbie always has the health and welfare of children at heart. She championed investments in safe routes to school, spoke out strongly on gun responsibility issues, and always ferociously supported mental health counselors at schools. And her passion for children's access to the arts has been a driver in the success to date of Mica being part of the Park and Rind Sound Transit Parking Project. Debbie brought an important gender equity lens to the city as well. She started an annual city celebration for Women's International Day, just one of her many steps to ensure women staff felt valued and heard. Debbie also served as a role model and mentor to numerous young women on the island and across our region. Speaking of the region, Debbie has a well-respected reputation across the East Side. She is known as a fierce advocate for Mercer Island issues while working together with other cities, the county, and state to address issues such as affordable housing, the environment, and transportation, which do not and will not recognize artificial boundaries. and transportation, which do not and will not recognize artificial boundaries. Your steady leadership on the Sound Transit Agreement ensured parking, multimodal amenities, and safety were at the heart of it all. I am honored to call Debbie my mayor and my friend. She's been a model of civility and decency, of respect for staff and facts, and a hard worker who put in more unpaid hours than anyone on the island can possibly imagine or fully thank you for. May tonight serve as just a little bit of the thanks and appreciation you have earned. So be it resolved by the City of Mercer Island. On behalf of its citizens, the City Council, we commend Debbie Burtland for her long-tenured and distinguished public service and extend its sincerest thanks and appreciation for her time and many significant contributions to Mercer Island over the past eight years. Approved this 10th day of December 2019.
Debbie giving a hug. Oh, you get a box. Wow. Wow. Very lovely. Ooh, thank you. Thank you. All right, Sarah. Do you want to put it back? This is what has changed as well, is this has gone up a couple points since I first started. There's just no way to say thank you. And for those who don't know, it was probably about nine years ago that Tana and I met in here through an appointment process for council. Another one of us got it. Jean Meyer Brom did and then.
And she was here tonight.
And she was here, which was absolutely awesome. But subsequently, Tana and I had the debate of you run, no, you run, no, you run, no, you run. So Tana became the campaign manager and then was subsequently pointed to council. So we always joked that it was a twofer. But it's been great to follow everything that you've done at the state level. So, you know, it's everything that you learn, that you didn't know, that you didn't know, and everything else. But rather than go off too far, I think I would just leave just a few words of perspective. And the first one is, for Mercer Island, don't be afraid to lean into the future. It's exciting. There's great stuff that's going on out there that comes with light rail, that comes with diversification, that comes with energy, and it comes with change. And Mercer Island's always been incredible at harvesting and harnessing that energy to make us a better community, but also to provide that degree of leadership for the region. So stay that course. And I'm looking at you and people in the audience as well. When I think about Town Center and I think about the work that we've done, one of the things that really struck me in the last couple of months is that Town Center is, we've been talking about it in the context of development and cars and transportation, our Town Center is for people. So as you look forward to the Town Center, think about how people are at the center, the strollers, the dogs, the people who want to cross from Al Joya mid-block. There's got to be a way to make that stuff happen, rather than worrying about how many cars can get through a traffic light at any given point. And the other thing that came up again tonight, and has really been sitting with me in these last few months, is Bruce, actually Bruce and Tana were such advocates for sustainability, as well as Mike Grady when I first joined. And that was important at the time because it needed to be elevated in terms of its agenda. And I was thinking, two years ago, when we had council races, sustainability wasn't really a point of the conversation or the campaign, to the extent that there was much of a campaign. And I realize now, it has to be put back at the top again. It's going to be the easy one for the future council to look at and ask, how do we resource? Do we need to resource? And I think the question is, you must resource. And it's got to be double down or nothing. The final thing that I would also just say is embrace technology. There is so much room for the staff to get paper off their backs, for responsiveness to be greater. It takes an investment and it takes time. And again, it's one of those behind-the-scenes efforts. But when I think also about the great work that's gone on here at the city, some of it has been unsung through the technology department or through the work that the utility organizations. So again, that's just a place where don't hesitate to invest. It might not be glamorous. It might not be a new playground. It might not be a new pier. But it will make this city what it needs to be. And then finally, I think I'm going where Dave went, and that is, you don't realize when you are out there in the public that the heart and soul of the city really is the staff and everything that they do. They're stuck between council and midnight sessions and having to be back on the street or back in the office again at seven or eight the next morning, planning the next session, calling Sound Transit, negotiating Aubrey Davis or whatever it is. And when I first started, you know, I think Bruce in particular will remember this, there was a lot of concern about the staff council relations. And was staff actually being recognized for their professionalism and for all the expertise that they brought? And I hope if anything has improved in these last eight years, that that is one of them because without you, this doesn't happen. So I'll look forward to seeing everybody out there. I'll look forward to not watching you on Tuesday nights, probably, but I will pay attention. And it's just been a complete honor and privilege. You're such a class act. Oh, and this is yours. We're done. This is your official. It's not apparent. No, it's not apparent. It's been a form.
If you'd like to say in your own cajun.
I have to box the climax. You gonna go? Yeah, just go.
All right. Debbie, wow, you get a plant, too. I just want to thank you for your grace and your class and your leadership. You've always been in a leadership position as long as I've known you, and I really appreciate everything you've done for Mercer Island, for women, for public service. And you are just, you're such a class act. And thank you so much for always being prepared, always being willing to return a phone call, always being willing to talk through issues, and bring collaboration to this body and the city and this community. And you're a treasure, and we're going to need you around. So I get you have your Tuesday nights free, but thank you for everything you've done and thank you for everything you're going to continue to do in one way or another for this town.
Debbie, again, just been a year, but it feels like, it feels longer.
I'd agree.
Thank you so much for all of your leadership, the help that you offered, the insights that you offered, early morning dog walks and cups of coffee and maybe an occasional glass of wine. It was really helped a new council person get her feet under her, and I appreciate that. I'm grateful for it. And yeah, I thank you for your many years of service, which I was not paying attention most of them. But I now recognize what it is everybody up here does, and I'm unbelievably impressed with all of you. So.
And I know where to find you.
Yeah, you do.
Debbie, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve and work with you for the past six years. I've learned a lot from you. I think you are a person with a strong moral compass, and I think you are to me commended for that. Sometimes it's tough, and sometimes you take shots. But you are steadfast, and I really appreciate that. And I think you are a consummate public servant. And I really take a break, but I really hope to see you back serving the public in elected official capacity. I just think, I take a break, take a break. But I think, but no, I just think, I think you have done great things for this island and for this region. And you have garnered a lot of respect from your fellow elected officials who are in the East Side. So thank you for your leadership.
So council is not like the rest of your life. You don't, it's not like picking your spouse, it's not like picking your friends. You get your partners. And it's been an amazing partnership to be able to spend a couple of years as your deputy mayor. I've learned a lot working with you about patience, about grace, of course, public service, about what it takes to lead a community. And you've done it so well. It's been a real pleasure to work with you. So to that extent, we have also signed a card for you and gotten you the biggest box of chocolates that they sell down there at Oh Chocolate, all dark chocolate.
All dark? Somebody was paying attention.
Lots of Cabernet in there.
Okay, good. Make sure the dogs don't get it.
Debbie, I've been super impressed by your ability to always find the positive framing to things. And that is a hard thing to do at times, and particularly in the way some of the community conversations have gone. You've been, well, just very impressive in that. And I also get to say, the mayor's job is hard. And having been there for a bit myself, I know that it's hard. And I really appreciate that you have taken it on these last two years at a time when, you know, social media just has continued to ramp up its impact on the council and on the staff. You've been in a tough spot, and I think you've done an admirable job of carrying that forward. So thank you so much for doing it.
You set the bar high.
When I was in college, I may have way through college by training horses, and I had about 60 horses in a barn. And there were always jobs in a barn that no one wanted to do. And oftentimes, you find you're just sort of stuck doing them yourself. And council is a little bit like that, that there's always a job that nobody wants to do. And I always found it remarkable that you were always the person who signed up for every job, no matter how painful or exposed or unpleasant or ungratifying it was. And I think that's just such a great trait of leadership that you have, is that you're always in. And you know that sometimes the work is not fun, but you know that the outcome has to happen. And I love and admire the way that you always jumped in and with, you know, not sort of here we go, but like a bit of enthusiasm, even despite that it was a really hard thing to do on occasion. I think that you forge relationships through, you know, work and through shared sort of friction or work. And I think back to that Sound Transit time as just, you know, you were tireless and you went on, you know, individual emissary missions down to Sound Transit to try and get some things worked out. And oftentimes, you prevailed, but you're just like tireless in your willingness to go do the right thing and do the best thing for the city. And I wish that were more recognized by more people because I think you really have done so many things that were remarkable. And Bruce is right, being mayor is a hard job. And that's a one-vote miss I am super glad I missed because I think you did a much better job than I ever would have done. And I think you've done a lot with that and a lot with the city. And when you listen to the accomplishments that Tana reads off, it's like, you should be really proud. I mean, you led a group through that, and then you had a tremendous individual contribution to that as well. So it's just really cool to watch so much that you've done for the city.
Now I have the honor and pleasure of recognizing Councilmember Bassett's service. Bruce Bassett has served the Mercer Island community with distinction in public office as a member of the Mercer Island City Council since January 2007. Okay, we'll wait. Okay. Ready? Okay. Bruce Bassett has served the Mercer Island community with distinction in public service as a member of the Mercer Island City Council since January 2007. He was council member from 2007 to 2011 and mayor from 2012 to 2017, and again, took the seat as council member for the past two years. During Bruce's three terms in office, the city council has met 377 times, adopted 235 ordinances and 190 resolutions, and you have reviewed over 1,400 agenda bills. You have also adopted six biennial budgets. Bruce has served as a city council liaison for the Arts Council, Design Commission, Disability Board, and Utility Board. He's also served on the Parks and Recreation and Sustainability Council subcommittees, the Council School Board Committee, and the I-90 Steering Committee. Regionally, Bruce has served on the Eastside Transportation Partnership and YR8 Salmon Recovery Council. He represented the Sound Cities Association on the King County Regional Transit Committee and the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board. He served on the Sound City Association's Public Issues Committee and Executive Board, and was recognized last week as a Sound City Association Member Emeritus for his tenure as a council member and leadership in promoting civility, and especially in addressing the effects of toxic social media. Bruce has been a leader in Mercer Island and across the region on ensuring that the environment is always part of the conversation. In 2007, Bruce gathered residents to form the Green Ribbon Commission, which helped identify early actions towards a greener approach to providing city services. In 2012, as mayor, he convened the Sustainability Policy Task Force, creating a roadmap to direct the expansion of the city's sustainability programs and priorities. For many years, Bruce has been an active leader in the K4C, the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, coordinating and enhancing the effectiveness of local government climate action. Over the past two years, he deepened this commitment with frequent visits to Olympia as an advocate for climate-related legislation. In 2017, Bruce helped move the city towards investing in a new Washington wind farm, providing carbon-neutral power to all the city's facilities, starting in 2020. In 2018, he served on the Safe Energy Leadership Alliance, working to raise awareness for the safety risks of oil and coil coal transportation. With your newfound freedom, Bruce, we are sure that you will enjoy taking more and longer skiing trips, more and longer rafting adventures, not possible again, testifying in front of the state legislature. Why not? Go down, hang out in Olympia, visiting both your son and daughter in their respective colleges, keeping up with your lovely wife, Nanette, and getting off the grid more often. We will miss Bruce's ability to collect, analyze, disseminate, and translate complex issues, his gentle way of guiding his colleagues to see his point of view, and his dedication to doing what's best for the Mercer Island community. I'm not supposed to cry. I remember the night that you were going to be mayor, and you came up to me and said, "I don't know if I can do this." And I said, "Of course you can. You just get up there. You just say it." And you said, "Well, I have this thing where I get really nervous and I'm afraid it's going to happen." And I said, "It's okay. If you need me to take over at any point, you just let me know." And you didn't need me. You did a great job, and you've been doing a great job ever since you got on this council. You have a very special place in my heart, and I will miss you. So now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Mercer Island, on behalf of its community. The City Council commends Bruce Bassett for his long-tenured and distinguished public service and extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for his time and many significant contributions to Mercer Island over the past 12 years. Approved this 10th day of December 2019. Okay, you get to open the box. Remember that box in the tea tree?
Oh, wow. Yeah, if anybody, if anybody asks me to do more of this kind of work, I will stab myself. I'm going to go back and sit at the dais to say a few words because I have some notes, and it's going to be a little bit easier for me. Come back up. I got to give you a hug now. Thank you.
Okay, don't forget this. Oops, not this one.
I didn't have this in my notes at all, but I'm going to add it. Ally was kind in saying, I told her I got nervous, but I got, I get nervous, got nervous, and would pour sweat. That was my sign of being nervous, and I've gotten over it.
And I've gotten over that over the years, pretty much. But that was the fear, was that I was going to be a dripping mess up here at the dais. And fortunately, exposure to the environment over time makes one a bit more immune to these challenges. So I did write a few notes. Thank you, thanks for the kind comments. And it's really been an honor to serve, and I've been so grateful to have had that opportunity. I wanted to speak just briefly about three issues. And from the perspective of somebody who's been 12 years now in this job, you know, a lot has changed. First issue I'd mention, no surprise, environmental sustainability. You know, when I came into office 12 years ago, it seemed like a big deal then, an important issue, and one that I was considered really the core of why I ran, because I did want to make, not that I could necessarily make change, but that I could always make it part of the conversation. And I felt that having it be part of the conversation would lead to sensible decisions by the city. One city alone can't change the world, but the need for change is only greater than it was 12 years ago. And a city can lead by example. And I urge the next council to fully fund the sustainability manager position and lead boldly towards a low-carbon future. It's really the only thing that we can accomplish. Second, the city budget. Proposition 1 was an honest attempt to maintain city service levels with property tax increases, and it failed. And now the staff and council will have to come up with a new plan. This will not be easy, and I urge the public to stay involved. But the bottom line is, if we want services, we need to pay for them. And I urge the council to be, to make this work happen and for the public to be supportive of a city that is a full-service city. Third, just speaking of social media for a moment. You know, social media didn't exist 12 years ago when I came on the council, and now it's ubiquitous. 12 years ago, if someone wanted to speak out, it was coming to a council meeting or it was writing a letter to the editor. And we've seen the rise of this negativity and vitriol, and they are taking a heavy toll on the council, and they're taking a heavy toll on the staff and the public discourse. We can restore civility if we're willing to engage. And I urge citizens to please go to M-I-Civil.com and take the pledge that's there. It's M, the letter M, the letter I, and the word civil.com. Take the pledge, read the material that's there, take the pledge and commit yourself to engaging on this. Finally, I want to offer a little reminder to the next council. We, you represent the needs of an entire community, all 24,000 of us. And if 24 people band together and push you to support their position, please just remember that they are 1,000th of the population here. So consider the other 99.9% of this community as you try to decide what the right thing to do is. Squeaky wheels are important, but we, as a council, have to think broadly about what the needs of the entire community are. And to council, I thank you for, it's been a pleasure to work with you. And one of the things I've learned as I've talked regionally to folks about civility is that the social media effect is happening in many, it's really happening everywhere. But an additional problem that many cities have is a lack of civil discourse even within their councils. And that makes the problem doubly hard to address. And I'm forever grateful that we, as a council, have always remained, you have always remained extremely civil and extremely thoughtful in the deliberations that we've had here. It's, I think it's a hallmark of a good group of folks who are really out for the best interests of the community and not for any sort of personal gain, and I thank you for that. And then finally, to the staff, thank you. You serve this community with grace and patience and dedication, and it really has just simply been an honor to work with all of the staff members that serve this city. I really can't say enough about the dedication that they exhibit in serving this public. And that's it, thank you.
Bruce, Bruce, Bruce. First of all, wow, 12 years. Thank you so much for everything you've done in those 12 years. But personally, I am going to miss you most of all. You were there at the beginning when I wasn't sure if I wanted to do this thing, after getting some gentle nudging from friends and family out there in the world. And you were the one that really made it clear what I was getting into, but didn't give me the full story. And forever and always, your initial words to me, I hold to heart and I repeat them often. And your advice was, be brave, speak up, and listen with an open mind. I hold that dear because we do have difficult conversations here on the dais and out there in the world. And your leadership style, your mentoring, your friendship, your holding the line, your building consensus, your collaboration, but also being strong in your opinions and being willing to step down a little bit when you have to, to go slow to get it right and keep up the good fight when you need to keep fighting, fighting, fighting. And your commitment to climate action is unparalleled. Like, I just am so humbled and honored to see you do that work and to see you honored for that work after all these 12 long years. And I look forward to carrying that mantle for you as we go forward, I promise, to keep doing what I can, where I can, how I can, here in the community, in the region, and with our friends up in Olympia. And with that, I just want to say, just thank you for being such a good, solid community leader and public servant. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve from you, to learn from you, and to now consider you a friend. And I hope you'll keep that mentor role going once you get a break because those of us that still have to keep carrying this forward in these days of civil discourse and community dialogue based on next door rather than sort of face-to-face communications and clear conversations. It's only getting harder, and examples like yours are really keeping those of us here going. So thank you for that.
I feel like I'm losing half my family. Bruce, thank you for your many years of public service. As I said, having served for one year, I can't even imagine the dedication to do 12, so I appreciate that so much. There are not that many people who either appreciate the amount of work it takes or are willing to do it. And so you're hanging in there for 12 years is impressive, and we're grateful for it. I, you and I have not always agreed on issues, but I have appreciated your defense of your positions with passion and with reason. And I have appreciated you sometimes changing my mind, and I've appreciated watching you sometimes change your mind because you are open-minded and you do listen. And so all the best to you in whatever happens next.
Bruce, it's also been a pleasure getting to know you the past six years. You are clearly a glutton for punishment if you've been on for 12 years. But during those 12 years, you have served Mercer Island very well. And, you know, I don't know, you know, I'm sure a lot of people don't appreciate everything you've done. I certainly do. And I think as people get to know what you've done, I think that realization is that you have been a true servant and a true supporter, advocate for Mercer Island. I think one thing that I appreciate about you personally is that you're incredibly level-headed, you're calm, and you, as people have said, you're willing to compromise. And so for a number of us, that's sometimes difficult to do. But somehow, you're able to look beyond yourself and look towards the, more of the common good and what is best for Mercer Island. And I also will say that certainly as you've been on your farewell tour, you know, on these different regional organizations, it is, you should be proud. I think people recognize what you've done, not just for Mercer Island, but really for this region. And certainly your dedication to sustainability issues and for the environment and basically making a future better for our kids and grandkids is to be really, you get my personal thanks for doing that. And I'm sure the rest of the community thanks for that effort.
To echo what Tana says, it's only been eight years, but gosh, it sure feels longer than that in some senses. But in a good way, in a good way. Thank you, thank you for showing me support early when I was considering this council run and for the endless hours of advice and perspective and brainstorming. And, you know, one of the things that I have such tremendous respect for among so many others is you are willing to follow a conversation or a line of thought in any direction. You were open, and you were willing, and you were thoughtful. And I'll always remember when Bruce showed up at council meetings with handouts, you're like, uh-oh, here it comes. He's done the numbers, he's got the graphs and everything else, but it sets a bar. It sets a bar for a level of thoroughness and a level of thoughtfulness and a willingness to include other people in exploring what would really be the best option. As you say, not for the small, small percentage, but really for the greater good of the community. You've led by example, you know, for better, for worse. The next mayor, Bruce has a great list of little things to do and don't do based on some learnings and lots of experience, and it counts for a lot. So yes, for everything that you've done for all the years that you've put in, for all the councilmembers that you have guided through this process and actually sheltered the rest of the community from on more than one occasion, I thank you. And I hope that this is just a different part of our relationship as maybe we go pull ivy or something in a park rather than debate residential code in railing heights and everything else. So thank you.
Yeah, that's a good plan. So I'll say, it's been an experience working with you because we, you know, when I got involved in politics, really I started watching you on TV, watching you in person. And so it was a great example to learn by. But it's been interesting to see you recover as a former mayor. But it speaks volumes to who you are as a person because I've seen you hold back, I've seen you shepherd us where we need to go, I've seen you help out when help was needed. And I've seen you catch yourself and say to yourself, "Yeah, I need to stop and just let this go." And, you know, you've always been a statesman, you've always been fair, you've always been honest, and you've always been solution-oriented. And I'd have to say that that spreadsheet that you made during Prop 1 with the scenarios and the click boxes, I mean, if Craig Reynolds is an actuary, he has big boots to fill to try and replicate that. So I would urge you to leave that thing online so we can always kind of say, this is the bar, right? This is the bar of analytics and decision-making that if you're going to do it the Bruce Basset way, that's what you want to do. And I'll honestly say, I don't feel like I'm losing family, but I feel like you're playing a country music song backwards, and you're going to get your life back, your dog back, you're going to get your vacation back because really, you've done a big service to this community, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
And here's a box of chocolates.
So when Ally says that you, I got to use my glasses here because my memory is bad and my eyes are bad. You went through 1,400 agenda bills and six budgets. I mean, the thing about Bruce is he really went through every single one of those 1,400 agenda bills and every one of those budgets, line by line by line. And what I appreciate about you so much is, well, there's a bunch of things. I'll limit them. You could kind of go do whatever you want. And this is how you choose to use your time to make the place where you live a better place. And then to leverage that to make the world where you live a better world. And that is just so remarkable because it's not just that you volunteer to do it, but the investment of time and effort is beyond what anybody up here does. You are more in-depth, you've done more research, you've always done your homework, and you know exactly why you're voting or persuading the way that you are. And it's like this volunteer work ethic that I've never seen. I mean, you did get the high pay as the mayor, which was 200 bucks. But it's really, I think, just so heartening to see somebody who's so deeply invested in trying to get to the right outcome, right? And I think you have a strength matched with a quietness that is, you know, I sort of measure people by how much I learn from them. And I learned so much from you. And one of that is, one of those things is, you can prosecute your case and not be a jerk about it. That's a little bit my style. Your style is like prosecute your case, but do it in a kind and gentle way where you try and bring people along. And even when the going gets tough, you never lose your temper or your center or your balance. And you're just, you just believe what you believe. And I just so appreciate that about you. And I think there's so much you've done for this community that I think is, some of it is noted and documented, and other is just quiet, and you've tried to help the best you can. So, I mean, you're like the model of public service, that you don't just do what you can do here, but you'd spread your tentacles out as far as you can to do the most amount of good with the energy that you're giving out. And I think that's just a super admirable thing.
Thank you.
So good luck with Tuesday nights, we're going to have a club. And we won't be watching the City Council.
Well, wow. With that, I think we're going to take a picture. But you know what? We are adjourned for 2019.